...for the Slick County School Board. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First off, I'd like to do a roll call to show that all students were good to the president except for Londa B., she's on vacation. Second up, I'd like to take a reminder that there's a clipboard out front, so if anybody wishes to address the board, please come up, sign your name, your address, and we'll get to that section and call you up. Third, I'd like to take a moment at the individual signs to reflect why we are here. Thank you. Next is the adoption of the agenda. Dr. Webb?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would recommend tabling two items on the agenda. Item 5D, which the board previously already addressed in a earlier meeting, and item FF, I would encourage the board to table this one and ask the board of the nation and I've shared it with the director and our finance director. I would recommend no other changes to the agenda.
All right. I need a motion to table item 5D and item FF. Junior made a motion, Dr. Chaney, a second. Need a motion to adopt the agenda. Linda, first, I need a second. Junior. Next is follow-up on student staff community achievement report on student work by St. Mago Elementary School Principal, Tom S. Martin. I guess I can get the next one. (laughing).
First of all, I'd like to just take a moment to thank the Board of Education and Dr. Webb for all your support here at St. Mago Elementary. I just feel truly blessed to be part of what's going on here, and it's awfully possible by you guys giving us the opportunities that we have to be in the lives of kids and to give them opportunities that are just endless opportunities. Also, I'd like to thank you for the opportunities that we're able to give our staff members. I've got Ada Kenner here tonight, and they are truly experts in their fields. They seek out the professional opportunities that you can put there for us and just keep challenging themselves to get better and better for our kids also. So I'd like to thank you all for those opportunities and also thank my staff for taking on that challenge and truly becoming experts in their fields. Then, my sidekick here, Ms. Watts, is truly phenomenal. I'm not sure how many of you all know the extent of her instructional knowledge, but she does a tremendous job for our faculty and for our students here, and she's a great asset to me and to our school. So that's it. I'd like to get started. I'm gonna go kinda quick because I know you all already know all these numbers, but I didn't wanna take the time to go through it because we've got some great things going on here. Enrollment, 320, and that's K through 8. Preschool Head Start, 39. Our attendance this year, 95.81, and that's a little bit of a decrease for us, but we've had some challenges, but we worked through them hopefully, and we'll be back on top again by May. Free introduced lunch, 89.15. Where do we want to go? We have set an elementary goal of 90 and middle school goal of 90, and that would keep us in the range of school distinction while that stays the same. Right now, our elementary score for this year was 95.6, and that's in the 98 percentile. In middle school, 95.6, 99 percentile. Those numbers are right there. That's (inaudible). Next generation achievement, strategies for improvement, reduce and address novice levels, full implementation of school-wide RTI plan, professional development to include rigor, whole brain, power teaching, higher order questioning, performance assessments, PLC meetings that individualize and change instruction after analysis of student data. And I wanna say that this is one of our strong suits. Our PLC teams and our team leads do a phenomenal job of looking at the data and making necessary changes for kids and getting, meeting their needs, and that takes place whether Ms. Watts or I are in there or not. I mean, our team leads and our teachers take this on, and they're a tremendous job meeting their kids' needs. Assessments mirror the state testing, individual team and school-wide goal setting. Next generation gap is our proficient, percentage of proficient distinguished students in each subject area. For reading at the elementary level, 89.9% of kids are either proficient or distinguished. Math, 84.3. Social studies, 64.3. Writing, 85.7. Language mechanics, 75. Primary school, reading, 86.3. Math, 83.2. Social studies, 93.1. Writing, 65.7. And language mechanics, 84.2. And those are all improvements from the year before except for one. So we improved in every single subject area at both levels except for one, so I'm very proud of the work. Next generation growth, elementary, 78.5. Middle school, 78.6. To promote growth, student growth, we will continue to monitor student progress, and like I said, the teachers here do a phenomenal job with that. Ongoing analysis of student data, rigorous lessons using whole brain teaching strategies and high order questioning, ongoing full implementation of our school-wide RTI plan, deliberate focus of data-driven PLCs. Next generation college and career readiness, advisor advisory. Now, this is new for us, 6th, 7th, 8th grade, the ripple effect. And I know some of the high schools already have this in place. We applied for a grant through K-FAG, received that, and it's gonna be in place this year for our middle school kids. It's a social and emotional, is to meet the social and emotional needs of our kids. We're going to have this each morning for advisor advisory, a small lesson, a thing for the week, so to speak, and then kids can access this program at home and lock, just there's countless items that they can select on their own. If it's something, maybe it's relating to eating disorders or bullying, whatever, you know, that they need to more information on, depression, anxiety, test anxiety, they can click on that and get not only a lesson, get information, get sites for additional information. It's just, I think it's gonna be a great thing for our kids.
How many years will it bring people?
I think it's for two, is that correct, Ms. Watts?
Yeah, we get to tape it, exactly, and it's always been seven hundred for two years.
So, and like I said, the great thing about it is there'll be the lesson each day, and all kids will have access to get that information, but depending on the individual student needs, they can pick different topics when they get home, or, you know, during lunchtime, or whenever they have some extra minutes. So I'm really excited for that because some of our kids have needs that we're not really sure about, so they'll be able to gain access on their own. Continue to develop and maintain ILPs, career data and operation preparation, when utilized for college and career readiness, college campus visits for 7th and 8th grade students, and call it a career fair for 7th and 8th grade students, and those have all been big pluses for us for our middle school kids the last few years. Next generation graduation rate. We understand that educating children is a shared responsibility of all stakeholders. Communicating a vision of high expectations of proficiency and beyond at the elementary level will serve as a basis for completing our vision. And this is key for us because our kids are coming, are making it to middle school more successful than they have been in the past, so they're more prepared for the middle school content, and we're sending them out of here more prepared for the high school content. So we're having some success in that area. This vision will help to develop goal-oriented, proficient students that are prepared for success and graduate college and career ready from high school. Next generation program reviews. We did complete three internal reviews and the district peer review. Areas of strength, instructional opportunities, and strategies in writing and the primary program currently addressing improvements in the areas of arts and humanities and practical living. School-wide activities and instructional strategies are implemented to address all program review needs, and we realize now at this point there's been changes to that. Achievements for the year, first ranked middle school in Kentucky, and that's for consecutive years, so very proud of our faculty and staff.[597.12][597.12](applause) And this year, we think our kids, well, we know that they did a tremendous job again. Whether that's first or not, I'm not sure, but I do know that our kids are learning high levels here. 11th ranked elementary school in Kentucky, and distinguished elementary school three consecutive years. So we are, like I said, the elementary is shining, and that's contributing to our middle school success. So very proud that we've been able to promote our programs as they move on up. Our kids, our primary program's getting much stronger, our intermediate group is, they did a phenomenal job, and then that's, like I said, it's just progressing for our kids. 23 students were distinguished in all tested areas, so that is quite a feat to be distinguished in all area, and that's continued to grow each year. So we recognize those kids with a special, we recognize all distinguished kids with a distinguished dinner, and then our kids that were distinguished in all areas, of course, attended the dinner and received the plaque and recognition and so forth, so that's hard to do, and we realize that. Middle school, stay high, can the state winners, and that's, I think, five out of the last six years. Our academic team student, one student this year competed at the state level. We're very proud of that young lady, and hopefully in the years to come, we'll have more following her footsteps. Our STLP competed at the state level, archery. We had two students compete at the state level. Our choir received a proficient rating at K-MBA. We had 59 students, it's cut off there, that had perfect attendance, K through 8. So really proud of that. We continue to have kids that come to school on a regular basis, and for our kids in K through 2, I think that's right, Ms. Watts, we do bicycles, and then third and up, we changed it up a little bit to be more motivating. We took them to Kentucky Kingdom, so third through eighth. And then for 8th graders, we gave away an iPad for, we had nine 8th graders with perfect attendance. So we, that kids come to school every day, and that's hard to do, especially when the stomach virus hits. That usually takes us all out. Nine students this year met the requirements for the academic excellence banquet, and we only had one go last year, so really proud of that increase. That's some pretty tough guidelines to achieve, and like I said, we're just continuing to see success as the kids move up through the grade levels. This is what we recite every day before school, "Have high expectations, enter prepared, respect self and others, and demonstrate responsible behavior." Any questions?
I saw you. We're just going to be better than elementary, except the writing. What happened in writing?
Writing?
Like, your elementary school is 85.6 in writing, and you're just to drop to 64.6.
Well...
Okay, but that's why is middle school doing better than elementary?
Middle school better than the elementary? Or, see it the way around, right, elementary?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. That's a great question. Our kids in the past, we've had some changes in writing in the past couple of years as far as teachers and so forth, and I feel like we're doing a really good job of getting them prepared, but it's a subject area that kids are really not, in general, they're not motivated much for, but that's not, I'm not trying to use that as an excuse because we've gotta find a way to motivate them. But I don't know that I have one answer for that. It's, we're doing some things school-wide, universal things from primary all the way through 8th grade to try to just build on the same strategies and concepts in writing. So I don't have any straightforward answer to that, but it's something that's, you know, we're very aware of and we continue to address, but...
I could help a little bit with that, Dr. Baria. Unfortunately, this is a systemic issue, not only in our district, but regional, statewide, but just recently, our team with a group of our people at our schools revamped our writing program district-wide because what we're finding is with kids in writing specifically, and of course, there's issues with reading too, but when kids leave exit intermediate into middle school and then all the way up into high school, writing is an area that we don't do as well as we do other areas from district. So within the last six weeks to eight weeks, our directors and all the teachers in the district has completely revamped our writing program to address some of these issues, but it is a district-wide issue as well. So you're gonna see, St. Mago's gonna be higher than some other middle schools in writing, but still, middle school writing in our district is not as high as some of the other subject areas. And that's systemic, and that needs to be addressed.
And, and the numbers are, seem low, but they're, in comparison, they are, you know, really good, but you're right, there is, there's a decline there.
You know, there are going to pass COVID related writing now, like that. You know, COVID related writing, we know, we could find a way to handle that. You know, we're going to start COVID, you know, COVID related...
Yeah, they have a new law requiring us to do cursing writing, and we still do that in our district at multiple levels. And writing, you know, putting thoughts, analyzing thoughts, and putting them on paper is a key area where kids struggle across our state. You talk to colleges and they'll tell you that's the number-one area where students struggle, of reading, comprehending, and then putting it in a paper or a format where it's easy to read and it's fluent, so, but that's an area that, it's an area of focus, systemic across our district. And St. Mago is no different than any other school, other than their writing probably a little higher than most of the level with some of the writing programs.
But that's a really wonderful job, COVID related, with 85 or 6% kids are free and you manage. Really, really wonderful job.
Thank you.
I have one question, it's not just my school. You know, I don't remember the so many places. I think our governor passed a new rule for the community colleges. They're not going to pay for enrollment, but they're going to pull how many graduates are, not drop off. What happens in the colleges? Kids take rogue courses. They take like sociology, psychology. There's no job in our area. Either they have to move from here or they're working on. So what do you think? You know, I'm sitting, well, I'm a resident, I work over here. My major agent that college, only in college, is school, they cost. What do you think about, you know, and the position, I've seen so many growing parents. And, you know, driving is what it doesn't kill, employed coffee, lazy, buy, move, buy rich grandparents. And then college, or grab them, good them, they make a good care of their kids, they load them, but they're 20% level sometimes, 6th grade, 8th grade, 9th grade, so they are not highly competitive.
Well...
What do you think about counseling in the school? Can you just start from first, you know, be tried, what they can use, and what are they doing in this area? I just want to know, so, if that's my next year project.
Okay, we, we do experience a lot of that at grand, kids being raised by grandparents, and we have the mindset here at St. Mago that, you know, we do what we can for all kids. Kids come in from all different types of situations, and it's our responsibility to inform them of the career opportunities in this area and the college, you know, college avenues that they should take. So with the career, (inaudible) college and career readiness, I'm sorry, I forgot the name of it. The career fairs that we have, operation preparation, the ILPs, all the things that we have in place at the middle school level, address educating kids about the possibilities in our area. So we know they're coming in from different backgrounds, and we take that into consideration, but we have the responsibility to get this information out to all of our kids. So even though they're coming from maybe impoverished situations, we share that information with all of our kids, and they go through the ILP process and these career fairs, and they're getting information about what college opportunities or career opportunities they have. So, you know, our faculty and staff receive update trainings each year on how to share this information and what information's available to our kids, so we try to provide them with the most updated information on...
Dr. Baria, I'm gonna swing at your governor question, because I feel pretty passionate about it as well. What she's referring to is the performance-based funding for the colleges in Kentucky, and while graduating and getting degrees, there are also some pitfalls in getting a job, and I think your point was excellent, that we gotta make sure, trust me, I'm not the most secretary around, but we gotta make sure that the jobs, the degrees that kids are getting actually lead to meaningful employment. The only concern I had, and I've shared this multiple times, is that we don't start as being more selective about the way that it's cool, and that is a figure based on what you just said.
Thank you, Dr. Webb, for helping with that.
Going back to your writing, Mr. Miller, you have writing, like a teacher teaching writing across the country.
Yes, we do. We, we try to incorporate reading and writing in all subject areas. It's something that we've worked on for five, six years, and our teachers are furthermore confident in writing, not as much as some of the other subject areas, because some teachers have obviously downed their addiction in, you know, certain subject areas, but we have tried to increase that and collaborate more with sharing, like I said, not only writing, but reading as well in all content areas. We do teach writing at all levels, and we have, just this year, we're starting a writing lab for our primary students, so we're going to address that much more intense in our primary program so that they're more equipped when they get to intermediate, and then I feel we're pretty strong moving up from there, but we gotta address it much earlier.
And there's many writing workshops that you should be enjoying, and we have a full hour.
There's, there's some. We have opportunities, like Dr. Webb said, we have opportunities that come up throughout the year, and we try to send, obviously, our writing teachers, but I also try to send another teacher or two with them, so that they do get the, you know, the most, the best research-based practices that they should be using and strategies that they should use in the other content areas.
My next to that, Mr. Miller, (inaudible).
Thank you.
For your elementary social studies scores?
What's that?
They were, your elementary social studies scores, they were as low as your middle school reading, writing scores. So please contribute that to the, to the reading and the writing problems to go along with social studies, because it seems like you have a good foundation in order to be able to comprehend and social studies.
It could be. We, in our, our social studies, and the scores are pretty good, but we have had some changes in social studies department, things like that, so social studies is one of those areas that, you know, we, we teach it obviously, but it's, in the primary program, we try to incorporate it, just like the science, but we honestly don't teach it as much as we should. We have to hit it harder in our early grades so that they're coming into intermediate proficient, just like the writing. So we have, you know, intentional focus to hit something, not only social studies, but science harder this year, and, you know, writing, so we're gonna start with our primary program and push it on up through the grade levels, if that makes sense.
Because I think the study says in terms of what the proper social studies later on, if they wanted to...
Well, the commissioner discussed finally trying to tackle the social studies standards in a couple of years that nobody's been willing to touch. But, you know, Donna, to your credit, the, you know, label from the state, I mean, just super stuff.
That's right.
But one of the issues, and we shared it to the form by some of our staff before we came in with the commissioner, is, and the principals in the room can tell you, we always fall upon teaching every subject every day, because there's kids that love social studies. There's kids that love science. But in all fairness, we're asking them to do a lot in a very, very short period of time, so sometimes schools, you know, get caught up in making decisions where we're gonna teach social studies only three hours this week, and we, we're, we've asked all our principals to go back and make sure that every subject is been taught every day, at least, to try to make it as equal as possible, and our school's done a good job with that, and I think we're gonna see the school scores continue to rise in all areas.
Yeah, Dr. Webb has made, sorry, he's made very clear to us in our (inaudible) that we need to put more focus on the subjects that we've kind of, like you said, have made kind of creative schedules for, like science and social studies and writing, so he's been addressing that with the principal's (inaudible) this past year, and we've made changes for this upcoming year, in those subject areas.
Hopefully, there's some change. I mean, as we all know, these kids come to schools that, we got lots of people, if you talk to our kids, want them to be in the medical field, and sometimes we had their schools that may not want to teach as much science, and kids love science. So, but our principals are adjusting, and I think, Madam Chair, you'll see all the scores getting more level, the gap between writing and math, and science and math, social studies and reading will be closing.
All right. I am more concerned about writing, not just two-year-olds. Of course, (inaudible) years ago, we really put up some good writing students, and my son is really, really good at writing, and he did the obvious, like, he's back with (inaudible) on that, but they really have to do more writing than they already hate, so that's, it's so (inaudible). Nice to take students back to writing and writing.
I don't, I don't, Lynn, I don't think our writing's more of a down in the district.
They have, we need to supply them with that, send up.
Well, they're lower compared to all the other academic areas, but I think we continue to come up.
Yeah, ours in both areas, elementary and middle, are significant gains from the last, last year's scores in writing.
And one more question. The social studies, a little, social studies, (inaudible) ratio, middle school tests, they can be over... First of all, they got, you know, (inaudible) but they teach at that age, still a lot of actual, actual...
Right, our middle school social studies, we have been just really fortunate to try to bring social studies to life for the middle school kids, and we try to do that across the board, but as you all know, we take, we take a field trip each year to somewhere very historic this year, board approved for us to go to Gettysburg in Boston, and our kids here at the middle school level, and we're trying to, like I said, make that happen all the way across, but they love social studies. And our, our teacher is really strong in the content area. He, when he goes with us, he really and truly serves as a tour guide, so, but they, they do, Ms. Watts says she had to remind me of the numbers, but there's not a big gap in the, in the gender there, ratio, but I think bringing it to life in particular, and that we created that kind of a tradition of making them tied into some city that we're gonna visit that year, and they just, they do, our kids love social studies.
Well, congratulations on maybe seeing them for the break up.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Ms. Scott, you said it earlier, but I want to publicly recognize you all. Your kids on the trip, Dr. Baria funded, was, they were amazing. They were super, super nice and very, very easy to work with, and I know money told you that probably earlier, but no one said publicly because it is a reflection of your school and your school culture. Thank you, you're doing very good for the kids.
Great, thank you all, appreciate that so much, it means a lot.
Next is community comments to the Board of Education. Any students in the audience that wish to speak? Parents, PTA, PTO, SBDM councils, classified employees, certified employees, FCE, Principals Association, members of the Board of Education? Anyone else left that wishes to speak? Next, action or special reports. A, receive athletic academic attendance report. See anybody have any comments or questions? I need a motion to pass. Dr. Chaney, I need a second. A second by junior. Motion passes. 4B, the chief report on (inaudible) schools health service report for the 2016-17 school year. Does anyone have any questions? Does anyone have any questions? Need a motion to pass? No motion, need a second? Second, Dr. Tanner, can you oppose? Four B passes. Next is five, action or special reports. Student report, five A receive reported superintendent. Anything you need to add, Dr. Webb? Anybody have any questions? I need a motion to pass the report of superintendent? Do you have any motion? I need a second? And a second, can you oppose? Five A passes. Five B, receive utility report for Stumbo Elementary School? Anybody have any questions?
I always, you believe me, I always call my, the review by doing a job. You pay expense going to hire or houses. You pay more every month every year. But first of all, who's you, they know what they're doing.
I agree. Greg and his department have been wonders with their utilities for every school. So thank you, Greg, I appreciate that. I need a motion to approve the utility report for Stumbo. Dr. Tanner, I need a second? Second? Any opposed? Five B passes. Proceed, receive construction manager architectural progress report. I saw Kevin's meeting.
I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. And we know how big a project for Rappel is going ahead. It's exciting. Two projects going on in the district, it makes it a buzz. Things are happening everywhere you look. I was on both sites today, and we showed us some of the sites. So we're going to do a little bit of a switch back and forth to the media content and kind of agenda. I want to take you through, first off, and let you see more of that slide. What we're seeing here is a photograph from the parking lot area. This is the actual building here. This side, the admin area, and coming down to this sort of patio. You can see a lot, a lot of workers transpired over the past month, or past thirty days. And even this makes you're going, taking advantage of the weather. There were a couple of hiccups at the beginning of the project, some site-related issues. We'll pass those down in room four, in a good place. Now, this happens to be the administration area here. That is part of that alternate acceptance and how you think you have an administration area right out front of the building, as opposed to being in part of the school. And I think that was really important, a decision that you all made as the Board of Staff made, is to get that back out once you've got the supervision of all the students coming and going out of the school. You will see photos as we go further along the construction, how that begins to take shape. Again, over here, because this is the real push in the gymnasium. The floor slabs are poured down, all the floor slabs roughened, are ready. So they're bringing the walls up, and getting down around the perimeter. This happens to be the area, this is where they built the photo room, will be outside of the gym. And this is roughly in the area of the entrance to the main gym, as you come in and make entry for them. So we'll start seeing that develop. Just some of the masonry work going on. I like taking shots of this in my own record to go back and kind of talk to them about what they're doing. This time, I saw a lot of good things. The wire mesh is being installed, or was supposedly being installed. They were paying for reinforcing here. Here is an actual section of wall up to Baron Lake. So now you can start to see the mass of this building even more so. This will be bleacher seating up here, bleacher seating across the end. Again, a similar feel and appearance that we're doing at the Ford County High School. More masonry work going on, like Bella Mason's on the site today. Moving quickly, all metal frames. Let's see if these are out being set. Just some of the things, normally we see all the time, bad joints that are not full. And that's part of the masonry, technically, in the wall. Today, they would have done a very good job of making sure there were full masonry bad joints. Wanted to show you a little bit of the complexity. A lot of times I show you photographs of what's going on above ceiling, and the complexity of the conduit, even below slab. There's a lot of conduit below slab. And the contractors thinking that way. And engineers very simply draw a hundred D eight point B. Those contacts, they just have to put a concept into their mind and get that right again, and that's what they're doing here, get that to the appropriate areas. Both sides of the main entrance. This will be the main entrance into the building. When they come out in the admin area, they're both as into their original entry. So there's a courtyard on the left and a courtyard on the right. The store graveyard is in, and they're going to be getting the top soil in that area as a finished spot out. The reason being is, this is going to be an enclosed courtyard. The only way to get in that courtyard for maintenance and to walk this through and discuss it, is to bring items through the doors into the corridor and across the corridor. So we don't want the contractors bringing heavy equipment through those doors. A lawn mower, lawn care equipment stood to spread that top soil. We told them to get the top soil, and now we've got an opportunity, and they're bringing the top soil to get it placed in. Down the halls, you can see here, this is a concrete wall that will be covered with a jet board type, a high efficient jet board. We have some swells issues, and we're going to issue a maintenance and lightweight construction. So this portion of the building will have that wall covered, and the windows will go down to the top of the wall. So you'll have these lights, and you're not spreading them through that area. They are already designed for the side connector. This is going into the main entrance. Floor slab is poured here, going in, and then being the corner of the rain. Just some shots of bone breaker, wire mesh, you know, where we put that. A vapor barrier close to slab. The old days, your existing building, you probably don't have vapor barrier. But nowadays, we know that it forms a vapor barrier in construction. So every floor slab gets a vapor barrier just to stop that water transmission. More efficient there, the systems are, they're going to draw that humidity out. So we've got to make sure we keep it from getting in the slabs as well. Here is that slab, this is the new floor slab. They'll come back here and down those slabs together. And that's what they were preparing to do today, to start doing on those. As you go in the main entrance, this will all be concealed by jet board. All of that will be gone, you won't see those flooded areas in the original plank construction. You now come in, now a form you do may be issued there, it'll be notable as you're nice up in the courtyard, or nice up in the corridor through that area. Another shot of the slab. Again, looking back at the courtyard, here's your existing gym. Remember how we built up against that existing building? They're sharing the place. That shows you the difference there of that height, or the width of that space. And then there'll be a connector. That'll be a closed, basically, a chase. There'll be nothing in that space, so there'll be nothing at all there. And that roof over it, we want to keep that separation distance. The ramp going back out, and you see the grade change difference. When you walk in, this is going to have a grade change because of the width and the length of the ramps. It's not going to feel like a drastic change. So it's going to be very comfortable, ADA accessible, and so forth, so it needs to be real change. The other side of the courtyard here, you can see they're working in this area as well. They'll begin, this thing we talked about today, they wanted to kind of go ahead and pick this ramp in. And we explained to them, asked them, if you could close that off. We explained, if you can't close that off, you've got to have that by cover. So they don't have to do that, and they're good for tiny buildings. They can't get a jump on things. But remember, destruction drives destruction. So we're going to make sure we maintain the life safety of the building and move forward, and we will have to do that at this point. Here's that chase, that nice open chase. There'll be no access to that, no purpose of that, that's the same with those two buildings. It causes a difference in the construction. Wire group, and I took a shot of this. Some of your locker rooms are partially below grade, but there is a, what we call a bed and night clay, almost like two minutes. But it's bed and night clay, it's on the wall. In front of that is a protection board, and in front of that is a rain chip pos. Water gets in, the bed and night clay swells, and then seals it up so you don't have any water on the ground that enters those walls. So that's what they learned, got in place along that wall, although they are a little partially below grade. Here's again some more shots of the reinforcement still going on. The special inspection agent, the interior agent, who has worked in nearby, independent, third party, has been on site expecting a rebar placement, and rounding the set house, and so forth, to make sure the structure is accurate. Here are just some more shots of the masonry going into place. And there, of course, is the tall wall on the area. All metal frames going in. And then nicely showing you how they're tying the two walls together and getting that done. Work's going very well there. We feel like, I talked to the C N today, I asked him about the progress. He couldn't be here tonight, he wanted to share with you. Feels like they're probably about two weeks behind with some early issues. But overall schedule, they're doing things now. There's some big events, and working the areas they hadn't originally intended to work. So at the end of the day, we're still on schedule, so it's a good one. Any questions about that slide? Beth? Beth? Want to show the board up? We just pulled that up. Well, he's looking at, at the Ford County High School, again. The bench leaves if they may. They are still pushing, continue to push it. Went out there today, intend today was to actually punch out what were in the 100% complete, so you can punch out and establish the level of expectation for the rest of the rooms. They weren't quite there yet, still some things. I told them I wouldn't do that until they got those things bred. And they're going to address those, so I have to come back in the approach of July and do that contact report for them then. So they didn't have that ready at that point. What you see here is the upper level of the gymnasium. Again, this is the track surface here. As you walk the track, and then it's an unfinished surface back here. It's basically sealed concrete underneath the bleachers. One of the things you may notice when you go out there, you wonder why are the lights on that wall, which is called above lights? You can kind of see the bleacher structure leaning up here, they go above these lights. The purpose of that is, you have access behind the bleachers, via doorways, that you can get underneath there and keep them clean. So the lights there, one, for inspection, to make sure they're safe, everything's working properly. And two, just to get items that they drop in there, fall through, crash, and break, that's what they're keeping clean. And next, why do I put it there, I guess I have control of this? All right. You're going to see a lot of areas, when you drive up there right now, you're seeing that they're getting ready for the base floors. The base floors are asphalt, and the curves are different ones. So they're getting ready, again, doing all that asphalt. Is that me or you?
I'm the chair.
Okay, I don't know what you mean. A little bit darker shot here, but again, this is showing the entrance sign. It's got one entrance. Some of this stuff is going in now. Get it that way, it's difficult to see in a photograph over in the dark photo. Excellent. This is the really fun part. Now, we're sure to see the four feet, she's going into cafeteria. This is the porcelain tile. Again, they're utilizing this system like they've done it elsewhere. So the way that it's self, rather than system, basically consists of a pad that goes down and a wedge. Very simple, but very effective, helping us maintain a very true floor. Excellent. This is really exciting, because this, them, has the soft framing, and the railers are going in, you're being entered as you come in. There'll be the Jaguar logo, and it'll say, "Ford County High School" on the floor tile. They're holding off on that floor tile right now, waiting for that to be sort of a final cake top. That is a very special, large tile. They don't want to put that down, the contractor's going across. They want to make sure they get that down, and they're going to let that out. Excellent. Gymnasium, the wood gym floor is in. You can start to see here, a lot of items being stored for the bleachers. Again, installation does, then they'll start finishing out the wood gym. Very beautiful floor. You can see the amount of space, and there's the bleachers going up there as well. Excellent. Typical science class certification works in. You can see here, these are the types of things that we're looking at today. Some unfinished panels that we just got installed, trying to wrap it up. Now, the closer system is in above a few hoods, so that kind of break, this team, everything, you get access to a few hoods, you get access to those as well. Excellent. The typical classrooms are done upstairs in the third quarter. Again, they're working down. The goal is here, is, well, I understand, is July 10th, furniture rocks. So they are ready for that furniture, what they're doing here is getting wrapped up, finding things for the furniture to ride. Everything, so if you stop, I talked to the contractors today about protecting existing floors. Are you sure we're going to be bringing the equipment in to haul that in? I want to make sure that floor is protected. So when you come in and you're damaged with your floors, just give the equipment in there to install. These will be units that go up and down, they're motorized, so that the children can do the stand-up demonstration, or if you've got media accessibility, you can adjust those.
Those are like ones that was at Boyd County?
Yes, they're at Boyd County. A lot of universities don't do that, so a ton of them. But we're kind of leading them to do some renovations as well. Excellent. Light fixtures. There are a series of light fixtures here, they were planned with the color of the lights. The lights are LED, so you can adjust those, you can change the colors. You can wear day, use deep colors if you want, and you can white if you want. It's all your choice along the road. You're flexible with the lighting culture. These are over that new lobby. I will say this, if anybody tells you they play music, they don't play music. If I tricked you, they could joke with that in another picture. And they really thought they could play Christmas carols in the light, so I have a credit to them. Metal panels on the outside of the building, by the way, are lighter than that, so we're very excited about that. A very complicated process to get those, they're on-site and being installed. Excellent. You can see here, grabbing for the pavement, the base floor, the base floors to go down. You can see the state layout of the rest of the floor. Excellent. Inside, you know, the soft picture, this kind of, I apologize for quality photos. The mound circulation mess is in place. A little bit lighter than light, so it gives you a much, a much better feel for the space. The carpet's in. I would encourage you to see that, that is a very neat product. There's a lot of advantages, learn to use, if you would like the product. We've just tested, Greg, I think he did some tests on it. Everybody seems to like it, and it's carpeted out, it's sleeky, it's maintained. Excellent. There's another series of those lights, out of the main staircase, so it's going to, that's a kind of fairing the field grid. You can see they're playing with the colors, the contractor might change them up. Excellent. And we're back to that, any questions?
So July 10th, we'll be able to...
July 10th, we want to, our friends all, I think, construction agents, they will be able to do the furniture, so, so she's, I will be the punch test on the third, second, and first floor. I was surprised their shift starts did.
Yeah, I'm surprised.
And they set that all on, there's things they're working with, but we're not reaching out.
I was there at the school two weeks ago. It was wonderful. And I was in Lexington last week, a couple of people met me. They were just coming here for, here at the hospital. And this was really, so they were going by. And they cannot believe this is the high school. And they've done it a thousand times, another time. Not bigger than before, another time, it's just wonderful times.
I was sharing this with Hannah today, but Saturday, when I was there, I took a couple of the kids and they're still fired around to see everything. One of the incoming freshmen from South Floyd, after the tour was done, just was kind of standing there with this map up, and, and said, you know, what, what's your thoughts, what are you thinking? And he said, "I don't even feel like I'm anything anymore." He said, "I feel like I'm in California looking at them." He said, "This is, he said, "It's amazing, now we're going to have this."
Well, you know, I'll share this. I think this school is a production of this district. The ideas and concepts of this school can't be recreated. It's not just Dr. Bell, or Dr. Webb, that's still unheartened, it's not just Dr. Webb. It's been the board's input, it's been everyone, a great campus meetings, an hour spending with Brad, and his team, you know, maintenance facilities specialists, and the custodians, and the teachers, and the staff, all made this really special floor. And I think that's what makes this a really unique one. But I, I'm very proud of it.
And you very well should, I think, yeah. All right, anybody having any other questions?
Oh, we said it.
I guess we need a motion to peruse the construction report. Dr. Tanner, I need a second? Brenda, a second? Any opposed? Five C. Okay, five B, this table, so that brings it to six, acting back on six. Very lengthy. And it goes from A all the way through to double R. So, Dr. Tanner, she wanted double A hole, which is considered approved with surplus of textbook items from the bottom school, South Floyd, 612, McDonald Elementary, Arthur County Elementary, and Allen Elementary. Anybody have anything else that they'd want to cool and discuss?
I just wondered about the book. And I asked, like, the, 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 the supervisor, he said that, and I did that, it's two or three books at home. But why was the suggestion that, on the parents' day? Can we just keep the outside, and we want to be a part of it, and you want to...
The, the ones that they can't get rid of, Dr. Brad, that'd be a great idea. For example, one school has, South Floyd Elementary, they, there were some books that was surplus, that they, the rest of them are surplus, that they can trade into the textbook company, can get new books they actually need. So when the board requires some of these textbook surplus, the schools can turn around and sell those back to book companies and get books they actually need. So if the board, you know, wants the books for surplus, if there's any leftover that nobody buys, I think it'd be a great idea to give them to parents.
Absolutely.
Madam Chair, if I could just make one public... Sheriff, I could just make one public, how does America even find the island, but, because it is a left agenda, and I hate that, whatever agenda's that way, I just wanted to point out, there's one item on here, and I'll find it in a minute, Big Sandy Healthcare came to us a couple of weeks ago, and the board has been, for the last several years, very engaging on taking care of the health and wellbeing of our kids, and as we know, for years, Big Sandy Healthcare's been doing some dental work in our schools, they've been doing cleanings and stuff like that, and, you know, reports, we'll see over two thousand kids a year, and, but the issue's always been, when they find cavities and things like that, they recommend follow-up, but unfortunately, lots of times, it never happens. Well, Big Sandy now, in this agreement, and I want to make sure we pull this out, has a mobile dental lab, so they will be on site at our schools, and parents who agree, they will actually do dental work on kids during school, they can't get services, I get you on, so, and I just think it's a huge step forward, unfortunately, we have a lot of dental issues with kids, and I think this will really make a significant difference to the health and wellbeing of our kids, and I just want to make sure that everybody's pulled away. Thank you.
Steve, do you have anything else that they need to pull?
I just have one comment on L, I probably got to him very well, go, that when they do use digital handbook, that, the company that we're approving tonight has Dr. Webb as the superintendent, so before that is put into our, our webpage, that we need to make sure that the appropriate superintendent is listed in the handbook. So, I need a motion to approve, six A through six R. Junior made a motion, Dr. Tanner, my second, RR, I'm sorry, six A through RR, not, not the R, but RR. Junior made a motion, Dr. Tanner, my second, any opposed? Motion passes. Number seven, executive session, we have two, consider conducting executive session, KRS six one, one eighty, one F, for purpose of discussion of appointment of interim acting superintendent in contract terms, so do we need to, can we do that, can we go back in, or can we just go in for one? And then go back in, alright, I need a motion for seven and eight? Junior, Tanner, my second, any opposed? Alright. For the executive session, I believe we're gonna clear the room.
Yeah, we should, we're in the next one, I hear.
Senior, this is the section. Linda made a motion, I need a second, Dr. Tanner, my second, any opposed? Motion pass.
Anything?
And also, the KRS section, that I read off, for that executive session, when the error, the correct executive session is KRS six one, eight ten, one F. Now, we need to take action, run that executive session, on the convention that we have Steve Campbell as our interim superintendent.
Same.
Second by Junior, any opposed? Motion passes, Steve Campbell will be named as our interim superintendent. I need a motion for executive session, per KRS six one, eight ten, one F, and KRS one six one, dot seven six five, two D, any motion?
I have a motion.
Linda made a motion, I need a second. Regarding personnel matter, Linda made a motion, second motion, Dr. Tanner, any opposed? Alright, everyone is to be dismissed, send the personnel.
Sorry.
Okay.
They say it's okay as long as you don't answer your own questions, right?
Yeah, I guess, yeah.
We got, we got a lot figured out.
It's gotta be, it's gotta be a favorite for some new person. I live here, yeah.
What's his name again?
Steve Trimble, sad name.
Is it Mr. or Dr.?
Yeah, y'all gonna have to help us out with that, it's gonna get us on that.
Yeah, when y'all meeting y'all, it should be like, hi, my name is Josh, and you need to know that somebody on this is the best student in the campus. Let me just give you the inside scoop. I know what's going on.
Y'all have a new person this year. New pick person.
Woo, wow.
Yeah, I won't get rid of, all right?
Really, new person, really?
Yeah.
Won't be the one of y'all? I'll call him anyway, you can't stop me.
Well, that baby spot, that's why I'm not. Cause we all get off school.
I'll still call him. It's like, which one of y'all's are first?
You talk Christian. Yeah, new guy.
New guy's Christian?
Christian, that's your name, Christian.
Christian what?
Cam.
Does he still wait?
Yeah.
Where's his friend?
Give him a gum, yeah. He's only about twenty-five.
He comes from Delta County, they're producing some kind of a place in here lately.
He come from that, Big Sandy, what they call that interact. Coding.
Oh, really?
They got one of them.
Arnie, you know, we love to.
Yeah.
We've got another Arnie right now. Arnie, they call it Arnie, I believe, so. It's Arnie.
Well, how's Leah like this?
She's a little bit, she's not big on change, so if they're a little bit, you used to. Plus she's teaching something, she's, she now that.
What's she teaching at?
She's never taught before to give riding before, so it's something, it's all new for her. Good girl by that. That scraps a little bit for her.
Yeah.
Yeah, we thought that she was cute.
She's teaching with Nikki, so at least she's teaching somebody she worked with, pretty much, a lot of times been teaching with them. That'd be better.
It's like getting harder and harder, isn't it?
And when I, when I get warned, it was, I said, I mean, I do it anyway, cause I'm not a college student, and then you ask yourself.
Zero ten real quick.
Yeah, and I'm like, you know, and I only know what I sign, so I know it's not lawful.
I don't know what she asked me down the college, I mean, what's trying to avoid? They were the only ones.
Put back the board.
Here's the only important number you need to know.
I'm not quit, no, I just, you should imagine.
You got that laser pointer on circle there. Yeah, that laser board, aren't you?
If I can direct your attention to this, exhibit A. Remember this? At least our people have stories to remember. Any further questions that you guys will be directed to at the end? That would be so funny.
Maybe we're going to be bird, then in Pansville.
Nah?
I live in Pansville.
Oh, do you? Now, where do you advise over there?
Lost mine and lost them all now. I'm asking myself that question more and more.
You don't like there, you don't have to move back before you can.
You like to play, play Prestonburg City tax, so you love, uh, faceless city tax all the same time. I don't pay faceless city tax. You really, or you pay it? I don't pay it. You pay it, one way or another, you pay it.
You got bed now? Good to see you.
Good to see you. Yeah, I will take it easy tomorrow. I wish some wrong.
Thanks, guys.
I think we'll know how many more to read in a year, isn't it? I don't know, I'm already reading back. He needs to make a computer timing for, for getting, I think that, um, for people who have six months to steal it for Russia, that's all. Okay. That's like, that does, the restaurant, so that seems pretty dangerous, some of the doctors. They make too much of a risk, you know? Oh, the concept of the bag does, they're gonna kill me, aren't they? I'm willing to like it. I don't know, I'm gonna regret it. They're playing you the games that. I don't know, that's sort of, better, I would jump. My shoe.
Don't forget your job.
I'm waiting on Jonathan to say what I need to say. And then I promise we'll all be doing it.
My other brother that's not feeling that sympathy at all, he's not that stick, and he's stuck there.
Oh.
Yeah, so he's not feeling that sympathy at all.
I need a motion to count over the second session. Any opposed? After, uh, deliberation, the hearing is closed. Uh, as per KRS one six one, dot seven six five, two E, within five days, parties will be notified of board's decision in running. I need a motion to adjourn. I make a motion. Second, Junior, any opposed? The game is adjourned.